Lee Summit is your destination for big city vibes and small town charm. Head to the downtown Lee Summit Farmer's Market where local meets fresh. Then grab a cup of coffee and discover a variety of shops and boutiques just around the corner. Continue the fun in downtown Lee Summit at a retro arcade bar. Discover your new beer at one of our six locally owned breweries. Cool off with some handcrafted cocktails at happy hour. End the night with live music and good company. Lee Summit, Missouri.
Hello, Lee Summit. I'm Laura and here's your flash briefing for the week of June 30th. City Council will meet for regular session Tuesday nights, 6:00 in council chambers in City Hall. Meetings are open to the public or watch live on the state's YouTube channel. If you can't watch, catch the recorded meeting on demand on the YouTube channel or by subscribing to the Council Debrief newsletter, which breaks down three to four key agenda items. Subscribe at cityofls.net. Legacy Blast is this Thursday, July 3rd from 6:00 to 9:30 p.m. at Legacy Park. Gates open at 6:00 p.m. and the fireworks show begins at 9:30 p.m. Tune into 94.9 KCMO during the show from music choreographed to the fireworks. Concessions, food trucks, and more will be at the sports venue surrounding Legacy Park before the show. Be sure to arrive early to join in on the fun. Learn more at lsparks.net. We want to remind everyone about fireworks safety. Fireworks can be discharged July 3rd from 10:00 a.m. to 11:00 p.m., July 4th from 10:00 a.m. to midnight, and July 5th from 10:00 a.m. to 11:00 p.m. Residents who plan to discharge fireworks must have a 2025 fireworks permit. They are free and available at City Hall on our city's website and from any fireworks vendor within Lee Summit. Fireworks that are not allowed include bottle rockets, missiles with rudders and orphans, sky lanterns, roman candles, and parachutes. You can find more information at lsfire.net. And city offices will be closed on Friday, July 4th. We wish everyone a safe and happy holiday. Thanks for listening and have a great week.
Welcome to the Lee Summit Sign Department. We are going to walk you through our process from start to finish. We make signs as needed here. It's not like we just go out into the field and place the speed limit sign here, no parking here. Our traffic engineers, they go through and they'll do field studies. They'll send us down an engineering work order for us to go out, place new signs or remove signs as needed. Coming from the material, our blanks come in and they're just aluminum blanks. We can put our white, our red, our fluorescent yellow-green, whatever. And basically what it looks like is just that there. Throw it up into the roller. And once we got it covered, take it to our work table here and Tim will cut the corners, cut all the access off to where it's lined up right. As far as the plotter and the software that we use, there's a street name sign there and he's going to go ahead and print that out on the plotter so you can see the plotter and how it operates and runs. There are standards for the height, even just on letters on the sign blank. Basically what we have on the computer there is it's pretty much set up to those. And it goes through, it's got a very small but sharp needle that goes through and cuts everything out, letter by letter. Once that's done cutting, our next stage would be bringing it over here. Currently picking out the signed letters right now. We call it weeding or picking or however you want to call it. Next, putting it on the transfer tape. Then after it's taped, we bring it over to the roller. That's where we apply it to the actual sign blank. And we'll roll it through one time just to get the air bubbles out. And the last stage is basically just taking the transfer tape off the front of it. And there's a finished product of the street name sign. We'll take you out to the field and show you our process that we go through. We're going to go out and follow our sign guys, get something installed for you. This is where we check our underground utilities. Tim, you got AT&amp;T?
AT&amp;T is back here.
EverG, Google, so we should be good to go. We normally put all of our stuff together out in the field. Then once the base is installed, we'll go ahead and put the post in there. We've come up to perfect. And that's how we do it. Simple, quick.
This is the best place to work.
I love working here. I feel very blessed.
I love it here. I look forward to coming to work every day, being a part of this team.
Like a family away from home.
Where everyone feels like everybody knows their name.
A city that supports you. We see that with our benefits.
A pension, vacation days, job security.
Being able to be heard. We feel valued. We feel respected.
Lee Summit is a very progressive city.
It's growing. It's thriving.
We have this drive towards not just doing a job, but doing it with a spirit of excellence.
I had the opportunity to continue to grow regardless of 30-plus years doing this kind of work.
It's more than just a dollars and cents.
We're here really to give back.
Providing a service to better a community.
To go out and serve people.
To be a part of something bigger than yourself. If I would have known what I know now, years ago, I would have been here much sooner.
When I was about nine years old, my mother promised me that she would buy me a little black poodle for my birthday. The poodle was here in Lee Summit. We lived in Independence. I had never been to Lee Summit before. And the funniest thing when I got here, I just thought to myself, I want to live in Lee Summit someday. So in 1975, we moved here and we bought a little house in Briarcroft for $28,000. We started having children after that. We wanted to become part of this community.
All regular session number 61 to order, roll call.
Mayor Rhodes, he kept seeing me show up at the council meetings and he said, why are you here? And I said, well, I want to know more about what's going on with the city. I was asked to be on the tax review board.
To order the Lee Summit Planning Commission.
Then I applied to be on Planning Commission and I spent four years there. But I said, if I dip my toe in the water with planning and I love it, I'm going to try for council.
Aye.
State your name.
Aye, Senator Rader.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
2024.
On the 16th day of April 2024. Thank you, Mayor. So then going along with what Councilmember Carlyle said, we just get back into the room and we hammer it out. You know, we sit on the dais, right? And that's kind of one of the most intimidating things that you do is like being out there in front of people and being worried about, you know, saying the right thing or not saying the right thing. I want to make the right decision. I want to say things that will be impactful, that will be influential, that will help our city more. Most people know this on the dais. I am very impassioned about housing. It's partly because I've done real estate for 30 years, but it's not because I want to sell more houses. It's because we have a need, a tremendous need here in Lee Summit and really all over the country. There are a lot of people that want to come to Lee Summit. They want to live here. They want to buy homes here. I am excited to get more attainable homes, start bringing young families, providing senior housing, workforce housing, all those things that we need if we're going to continue to grow and become bigger and better. We're really in a good place for the future, but we need to continue bringing people in to be our future leaders. The young people that will be coming to live here, stay here, have a stakehold in the community, building businesses here. I built a business here. There's other people that want to come here and live and start. It's just important for people to always be involved in the city. It makes this a better city.
Welcome, everyone. Would you please rise for the invocation and stay standing for the Pledge of Allegiance?
Heavenly Father, thank you for this humbling opportunity to come together and serve our city. As the Fourth of July approaches, we're grateful for the freedoms we enjoy and for everyone who helps keep our community safe. Please watch over our celebrations, protect our first responders, and help us lead with wisdom and discernment in the decisions we make tonight. Amen.
Pledge of Allegiance, City of Lee Summit, United States of America, to the Republic of America, to the citizens of our nation, and to our people, and to the citizens of liberty and justice.
Okay, I'm going to move through the meeting even though my computer is still restarting like everybody else's. So I will first start with roll call. Could I get a call to... Oh, I'm sorry. I'm calling to order the City of Lee Summit Regular Session Number 42. Could I get a roll call, please?
Councilmember Hodges?
Here.
Councilmember Rader?
Present.
Councilmember Pryor?
Here.
Councilmember Shields?
Here.
Councilmember Funk?
Present.
Councilmember Lovell?
Councilmember Carlyle?
Present.
Mayor Protim Lopez?
Here.
Mayor Baird?
Here.
Okay, and then could I... The first item on the agenda is the approval of the agenda. Can I get a motion? I have a motion by Councilmember Hodges to approve the agenda seconded by Councilmember Funk. Discussion? Seeing none, please cast your vote and I'm an aye. Yes. Yeah, this is for the approval of the agenda. Yep.
Trying to find the motion. There we go.
We're having computer problems, everyone, so just bear with us.
We're having staff problems. It's okay. All right. The motions ran wrong. Here you go. Can you see it, Mayor?
No.
It hasn't moved yet. Maybe you see it? Try something.
I don't know. Let's do a roll call. Oh, wait, you got it?
Yeah, I'm putting it in manually.
Oh, it's starting to move. The computers are. Okay.
Now, do you see it? It just pops us to motion again. All right, let's do a voiceover. I mean, but that's what it says. Do you see it at all now?
No. Let's just do a roll call vote and then you can fill it in while I'm doing the proclamation or whatever.
Mayor Protim Lopez?
Aye.
Councilmember Pryor?
Aye.
Aye.
Councilmember Carlyle?
Aye.
Councilmember Hodges?
Aye.
Councilmember Lovell? Oh, sorry. Councilmember Rader?
Aye.
Councilmember Funk?
Aye.
Mayor Baird?
Aye.
And then will someone make a verbal motion to approve the consent agenda?
Mayor, I move to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Thank you. I have a motion by Councilmember Shields to approve the consent agenda and a second by Councilmember Hodges. Discussion? Hearing none. Could I get a roll call vote, please?
Councilmember Carlyle?
Aye.
Councilmember Pryor?
Aye.
Councilmember Hodges?
Aye.
Councilmember Rader?
Aye.
Councilmember Funk?
Aye.
Councilmember Shields?
Aye.
Mayor Protim Lopez?
Aye.
Mayor Baird?
Aye.
Okay, and the next item on the agenda, everyone, is the Council Roundtable. This is where we talk about items of general interest, things going on in the community, things of that nature. Anyone? Councilmember Shields?
Thank you, Mayor. I think it's great that we've got Parks and Rec Month on the agenda because we also have a big Parks and Rec event coming up. Legacy Blast is going to be July 3rd. Doors open at 6:00 and the show is at 9:30. So great thing for everybody to come out and enjoy. And then I wanted to mention, since we do have so many members of the community here right now, we'll be opening our applications for the Charter Commission in about a week on, I believe, July 9th. So anyone who's interested in serving on the Charter Review Commission that we do every 10 years, there'll be an opportunity to apply for that. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Councilmember Pryor?
Thank you. I just wanted to thank Mr. Thorne for the water. I haven't tasted it yet. Well, I don't even know where you are, but I haven't tasted it yet, but they said it was good. Now that we all survived the water apocalypse of 2025 that was terrible, but thank you.
All right, thank you. Anyone else? Okay, we've got a proclamation this evening. It's Park and Recreation Month, July 2025. So those that are here for the proclamation, come down here and meet me up front and face the crowd. You're going to have to bear with me here. Oh, where's Joe? Okay. Hey, Joe. So I'm going to have to look it up on the city's website. Boy, computer problems tonight and other problems. So give me one second. Usually it's up here and so it's not there. Hey, how are you? Holy cow. I'm going to shake everybody's hand while you... Thank you for coming. How are you? You're wonderful. You're pretty wonderful, too. Thank you. We're going to take a photo. You want to take a photo before the proclamation? We can do that. Who's taking the photo tonight? Okay.
I'll do all the jobs, too.
All right, thank you. Whereas, this is the proclamation, then we'll go around. Oops, sorry, sir. Parks and Recreation is an integral part of communities throughout this country, including Lee Summit, Missouri. Whereas Parks and Recreation Programs, Facilities, Parks, and Trails are an integral part of the Lee Summit community and are vitally important to establishing and maintaining quality of life, ensuring the health of our citizens, and contributing to economic development and environmental well-being. And whereas Parks and Recreation Programs build healthy, active communities, help us reduce costs related to medical care, provide therapeutic recreation services for the mentally and physically disabled, and improve mental and emotional health of residents of Lee Summit. Whereas Parks and Recreation Programs increase the economic prosperity of Lee Summit through increased property values, expansion of local tax base, increased tourism, and the attraction and retention of businesses to the community. I appreciate you putting that part in there. Thank you. Whereas Lee Summit Parks and Recreation serve over 1 million visitors annually through four community centers, one aquatic center, an outdoor ice rink, three splash pads, two sports complexes, an amphitheater, plus 92.5 miles of trails, as well as providing hundreds of programs and special events that serve every age, every season. By virtue of the authority vested in me as Mayor of the City of Lee Summit, I do hereby proclaim July 2025 as Park and Recreation Month. All right, who wants to start? Say a few words.
I guess I'll start. Thank you very much. Well, thank you very much for having us and for the proclamation and appreciate everybody being here tonight. We have some volunteers on the park board as well as staff, so we'll let them introduce themselves. But we'll start down here on to my left. My name's Nate Zier and I just finished my first year on the Parks Board. And I couldn't be more thrilled with the work that Joe and his team does every day to ensure that we have vibrant places for our kids to play. My kids are seven and almost four. I missed the last Parks Board meeting. Shame on me. But I missed it for the Coach Pitch One Girl Softball Championship game. And just seeing all the kids out there enjoying themselves every day, every week, every month, every year, regardless of the season, is just a testament to the hard work that you all do for our community. So thank you.
Hi, Mindy Olinbach. Been on the park board for a few years and it's a pleasure and an honor to get to serve Lee Summit and the Parks and Recreation Department. Nate talks about his kids playing at the park while I play at the park almost daily myself. So thank you for letting me be part of it.
Joe Sutuck, Administrator at the Parks Department. And I'll reiterate that we have a big event Thursday night, 6 o'clock, Legacy Blast.
Good evening. I'm Jim Huser. I'm the president of the Lee Summit Park and Rec Board. I've been a citizen of Lee Summit for 20-plus years and have been a big user of the Parks Department through my three daughters, participate in a variety of activities in, I think, every aspect of the park. We've used the park system and it's much appreciated to the staff, the upkeep of those parks, and to give us all someplace that we can go and participate and live healthy lives here in Lee Summit.
I tried to appoint Jim to the park board seven years ago and he said, I can't. My daughter's working in the camp program and there's no way. That's a conflict of interest and I can't accept the position. And I was like, well, how about we just wait till camp is over with? And then I appoint you. So that's what we did. Very good. I'm John Ellis. I've been on the park board for about five years now and I'm just very thankful, not only for all the work that's been completed up to date with everything that started with Legacy Park back in the day and well before that, but all the wonderful things that are going on right now. So it's great to see the vision and the passion and the community collaboration that's all coming together in order to help keep our parks great and wonderful for everybody in the community.
Steve Casey, I'm the superintendent of park planning and construction.
Lynn St. Thomas, Longview Community Center Manager.
David Dean, Superintendent of Recreation Services.
I'm Brooke Chestnut, Superintendent of Park Operations.
Ryan Gibson, Assistant Superintendent of Recreation Services.
Jody Jordan, Superintendent of Recreation Services.
TD Schott, Superintendent of Administration.
Heath Harris, Lovell Community Center Manager.
Erin Burchard, Assistant Manager of Lovell Community Center.
Nate Thomas, Recreation Supervisor.
All right, thank you, I'm used to Steve Casey giving big, long presentations about how to how to build parks, and playgrounds, splash pads, and Summit Waves, and I could keep going. No, thank you all for all of your service on the board, and in our parks, doing the grind and the hard work every day, and we are appreciative as a council, so, thank you. I'd like to take a photo, if y'all don't mind.
Can we take one more photo, but everyone kind of maybe layer in a little bit?
Turn to your right.
Oh, that's perfect. Otherwise, for the right. It's a long season for them. All right, ready, one, two, three. Oh, that's perfect, good job, y'all.
Thank you all again, thanks, Joe. Oh, thank you, next on the agenda is presentations. This is a conceptual presentation this evening. We'll follow that with a public hearing. But a lot of times, for developments and such, we do conceptual presentations so that we can get a general direction, and give a potential applicant or a developer direction. And so, tonight, the conceptual development is regarding economic development incentive requests for Oldham Village East. Drake Development is the applicant, Mr. Pennington, looks like you're here, ready to go, so, come on forward, sir, and after you present, we'll have Mr. Bushak speak on behalf of the city.
Absolutely, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, thank you for listening tonight, and I think it's important to note, it's been a little while since we've been up here, but first of all, I guess Matt Pennington, President of Drake Development, 7,200 West 132nd Street, Overland Park, Kansas. Circling back, it's been about five, six months since I've seen y'all talking about Oldham Village, and that's on the west side, so, tonight, we are talking about the east property, which I still have not really dubbed a name, I know we had put Oldham Village East, but I am gonna call that a different name in a different district as we go, so, we are looking at it as almost an entirely different project, and it will have different components, and we'll get into that here in a second. For those who don't know Drake Development, out in the audience, we've been fortunate enough to develop Streets of West Prior, we've been able to do the bank building downtown into ITAP, and then we've just had some marquee projects around town that are entertainment and mixed-use based. We currently have done over $1 billion in development, and we have about 250, 300 million in construction right now. So this gets us into the Oldham East project. It's been, I remember back in January, I said, "Well, you know, if you don't believe the east side will develop, don't vote for Oldham Village," and just with, I think the key word tonight is timing, and timing is an extremely important component to really anything in life, especially development. You can have everything come together, and without timing, it still has nothing, and tonight, we're able to say we've got timing on our side, so, and I'll get into why that's so important later, but, the properties themselves, it encompasses about 120 acres on the east side, and if you all remember the west side, there's been numerous projects that have kind of come forward here over the years, but a lot of things have had to happen for us to get to this point, and be in this position with a lot of industrial buildings that have come down on that east side over the years. There's been two major, big, you know, two very large ones, one was the Calmar property, the other one was Pfizer. Those buildings were in excess of 200,000 score feet, so there's been a lot of things that have happened to get us to today, and there's a number of challenges still ahead of us, and we all knew it was gonna take a special user to potentially get this project out of the ground and completed, and I'm happy to report that we believe we have that tonight, and we'll get into that in a second. So tonight is just the conceptual presentation, if you all feel like it's a project that might make sense, we'll quickly go to the PDP in August, Planning Commission meeting will shortly follow after that in October. Additional city council meetings would happen in November, and then, based on our users' timeline, which we will get into, we're hoping to start construction in December, if this project all makes sense for you all. And then, like I was saying before, there's a special user that we have identified, and that we do have an agreement with, that will be going on the north side of this project, and I'll show that in the site plan above, but it is an important component to the timing of this national wholesaler that has been, that is committed to the project. So this is what it looks like today, there's been, like I said, numerous failed installed developments in the past, and I can get into kind of why those have happened, and why we are here today. And I think our hope is to turn this into a dynamic, mixed-use community, and make it something different for the community, different than Streets of West Prior, different than Oldham Village itself, and we'll get into some of those different nuances. Here, you can look at it just from different viewpoints, but it shows how big of area this is, there's a number of properties that are part of this assemblage. One of the properties that would be part of it is the existing Zoetis Building itself, and then another 40 acres to the south of Bailey would also be included in this project. So some of the property challenges, these are a number of items that we all were well aware of on the west side, but still exist on the east side as well, there's regional blight, there's unknown building remnants from when those properties were demolished, the Calmar and the Pfizer. That includes USTs, underground storage tanks, that are actually in the ground out there now, we've done a number of environmental studies, we will have to pull those out, but, you know, there are some things that we're gonna have to take care of as part of that, so. And then I get into the complex property assemblage, this one is so important in everything we do, you have nothing unless you have control of the properties, and you can have every tenant in the world and every great idea, but without the control of those properties, you do not have a project, so, we do have control of the properties tonight, we can look at all of you and say, "This is a real and non-speculative project." And then there's the existing sewer inver depths, there's gonna be an extensive grading on this property, if you've seen, I guess some of the elevation changes, there's an actual Blue Rhine stream south of Bailey, and that's a very low-lying area there, so it really does kind of have to work all together with the 120 acres, and that's what made, one of the reasons that made sense to include Zoetis, the actual industrial building as part of this development, too, into the overall part of it, was, part of it was grading, and then part of it was some of the different restrictions that Zoetis has on the property currently, that we're gonna have to remove. So, again, I can look at you and say, "We've got agreements for each of those," and what I'm presenting tonight is something we can move forward on, if it makes sense. Then there's the roadway extension per Lee's Summit Plan, and we'll just kind of go into these, you know, piece by piece, these were some of the failed developments in the past, and I just, I like to go over these, I do and I don't, but I think it's important to look at them and say, "Well, why did they fail?" Just for, when you look at future projects. If you look at the regional, well, the stalled developments, there was the most recent one on the north piece, where we're proposing the wholesaler. It was an industrial building with just some pads out front, and the previous developer thought they could just do some pads without looking at the entire development, and then there was the Grove, which we all remember in 16, and I think this one's just pretty easy, when you just look at the renderings of why it didn't happen, so, sometimes, expectations don't meet reality, and I think that one is a really good example of that. This is one of the reasons the property hadn't developed, there was an Oldham Parkway extension that each property owner owned half the driveway, so it was essentially at a stalemate, so either property owner could come in with some kind of plan they thought they're gonna develop, and they weren't. So, that industrial plan that you saw was not feasible, that south property owner had to, you know, work hand in hand. You know, and the same with the Grove, the Grove had to have similar type of access easements, and to my knowledge, that, you know, none of those were worked through as part of their development plan, so, this is a key component which we will have, we already have agreed to, we have the properties under control, and own one of them already, and the wholesaler, obviously, this is critical to have a common accessway as you come forward with the wholesaler. This is the actual Lee's Summit envisioned plan on the left side, and then on the right side, you can see the actual Oldham Parkway road is coming through in a somewhat similar fashion than than what the old envisioned LS plan had kind of contemplated, so, there are some challenges on the east side, like I said, with elevation, so we have tried to think through how best this road will function in a mixed-use environment, but at the same time, making it extremely pedestrian and biker-friendly, so I think those are some of the things that were really heightening our senses, too, coming off Streets of West Prior. I think that's gonna be a really big difference here, you're gonna see a lot more green space, and a lot more easy access trails, and what I would say is, safety is really well thought through on this plan. So, the comprehensive development plan for the 291 South Interchange is obviously a goal, we've done our best to meet that. We're trying to establish a high-quality gateway community, these were just some of the city goals that, you know, we've already met on the west side, but we're certainly trying to meet on the east. Promote walking and bicycling with better connectivities to parks. In the actual site plan that you'll see here in a second, you'll see that we are proposing a Parks component. We have not met with Mr. Snook yet, because we're still trying to determine the exact size of that Parks component, but that, if you look at Streets of West Prior, and you look at even Oldham Village on the west side, Lee Park, each of these developments have that key component, and we think that needs to continue on the east side, so, we think that the diverse range of commercial, residential, and civic uses are all in line with the ADP, so, trying to follow that in the actual plan itself. So, I think we're gonna do our best to achieve the market-driven development, and harmony with envisioned LS, like I just said, it allows the development of the property with underutilized and oblited state, and then it seizes that critical window, so this comes back to that timing piece that I'll, again, I'll get into a bit more of. And I think this one, this project itself, if you remember the west side, you know, I think the city benefit here on this east side project with this national wholesaler, we'll get into what those numbers are, it's absolutely staggering in terms of what this is benefiting the city at the end of the day. So here's the development plan, the wholesaler is positioning on the north side of the site, closest to 470 and 290, I'm sorry, 291 and 50. And like I said, we do have a commitment from them to move forward on a development plan, and join us at this development, they would like to open as soon as possible, so at this point, we're, you know, pending, if this project makes sense to city council, we are trying to shoot for an opening of that wholesaler by November of 2026, so, I think this comes just into that timing component again of how critical that is, so, I've just kind of color-coded each of these, so you can see the restaurant retail component will be along 291, and I just put acreages on each of them, and then the percentages of what each portion of the project is, so, we're always looking at this, this is important of, you know, what the different uses that are all part of it. We will have a multifamily component to this project, the wholesaler actually, due to the volumes that they do, one of the things that came up at some of our meetings is, they are hypersensitive to the users that could be beside them, so multifamily is one that is an acceptable use, and it's, quite frankly, it's a perfect use for us as we try to create a high, high-end community. We will have a civic sit-down space, more or less, something with some fake turf, nothing that's gonna, you know, take away from Green Street at all, that's not that, but this is gonna be what we believe, you need some central civic space that links the rest of the development together. So, we'll get more details on that as we continue down the road, but you can see that purple section is what we're considering a civic area, and then the residential is in teal, and that's on the backside of the site, and that's about 23% of the project. And then the green space is furthest to the south, and that's somewhat where that Blue Rhine stream is, and where you can see kind of a larger pond, lake area that will sit furthest to the south. And then there'll be an additional restaurant retail component south of Bailey as well, so, this is a long-term project. We, due to the timing and how fast the wholesaler wants to open, we had to put a full plan together, which we believe is mostly where I think it'll fall, but just like anything, things change, and better things happen, and, you know, not to say we wouldn't come back, I don't want, I don't want to sit here and say, "This is the final, final plan." Some of the most important aspects of it are the critical accessways. How are the roadways are gonna work, so that's what we've been nailing down the most, and then coming up with some of the different mixed-use pieces that are gonna work kind of in tandem with not only the wholesaler, but the rest of our development. These are just some renderings of what it would look like off of 50 Highway, looking south. You can see, it's just, it is a completely different feel here today. There is a lot of activity going on on the west side, and honestly, when we were here in front of you in January, I remember saying, you know, "I believe it'll develop." And you just never can control the timing, but some of the things that you can control are, you know, the, giving the properties in a position that they're ready to be developed, and I credit the city on a lot of their vision to get us into that spot today, to be able to even have this discussion. These are just some more renderings, looking over the east side and west side. So what is it gonna take to get this out of the ground, there is an incentive request in order to remediate most of the blight, the environmental, the roadways, and there's just, there's an absorbent amount of costs that are on the east side. There is two components of it, the TIF is one of the components, and in this, we are requesting 50% of the eligible increment on the property taxes. This is different than the west side, we had to request 100% of it on this case because of the sales generated by the wholesaler. We were able to ratchet that back and meet more in line with the LSR 7 requirements. So at the end of the day, we did our best to listen in our last meeting to get to that. The sales tax on the TIF, it's, that's 50% of the eligible increment, and then we would have an LCRA that we would request a 50% real estate tax abatement on the multifamily, and then a sales tax exemption on the construction materials. The 50% real estate tax abatement is imperative to the project, there's a number of things that are part of the mixed-use project that, in this case, we are proposing of having structured parking. So this wouldn't be a surface park-type product, this would have, one of the properties shows underground parking, and the other one shows an actual structured parking deck behind, and that would be the intent, and having actual restaurants and retail in the front of that, interacting more or less like Streets of West Prior, but in a much more greener, formatted scenario. In our eyes, much, I don't want to discount streets, but much more walkable in my eyes, in this project, so, that would be the intent, so the project itself is proposed, is $416 million. Each of those components, the TIF property tax is about 5.7, the TIF sales tax is 57 million, and then the actual sales tax exemption is about 13 million, so, all those together add up to about a 21% request, which is below the project that we had across the street. So then this is the fun part, is what's different from our previous project is the CID sales tax benefit to the city here. If you look at Oldham West, Oldham Village West, the net present value of just the CID sales tax, if you remember, the CID was put into place on not only the west side, but the east side properties. So that was about 25.6 million for a net present value of just under 14 million, and then the new project with this east side component, it would take the CID part of this project, closer to 76 million, and a 42.76 NPV, just for the CID. of this project, um, closer to 76 million and a 42.76 NPV, um, just for the CID component to the city. Um, so, you can see, it's a, a net new benefit of about 50 million gross and about 29 million NPV. And so then the sales tax, that's not even the sales tax to the city as part of this project for the east side. The net new benefit to the city for the east side, we're estimating, um, it, to be gross over 118 million dollars. Um, and this is primarily just, a lot of it has to do with the number of sales that we're gonna be generating over here on the east side. And so that net present value comes out to nearly 71 million dollars of, of benefit to the city. So, um, staggering numbers, uh, exciting because we do have a commitment from that wholesaler. So, uh, we're able to stand up here and say, hey, if this does make sense, then, you know, I think we're gonna be lucky enough to bring them and, and open them quickly. Here's just some slides, um, of the, kind of the before and after, but, um, I think tonight I come back to timing. And if you look at the, there's, I always look at four or five components that make up a really successful development, and we looked at some of those that didn't make it, um, in the past. And if you look at what the city's done, the, city's done their part. They, they've provided the city, the city's vision has been lockstep in line with getting this property prepared and ready for this opportunity. You have to have the users. You have to have tenant commitments. You can't, you can't have even users without having the city vision. Um, and then the control, the assemblage. You have to have that part of it that I was speaking to earlier of, you don't have a project without having complete control. And then do you have a credible and financially capable developer? And, you know, you can, again, you could have all three of those and not have a financially incredible developer. Um, and so those four components married up with the word "timing" makes everything perfect. And so we have that tonight. We're here, um, excited to say that I, I, we are positive we can bring an unbelievable development that is a net benefit win to the city. Um, here for questions.
Okay. Um, I think we'll just go ahead and hear from Mr. Bushak.
David, yeah.
And then we'll put them all together at once. Thank you.
David Bushak, Chief Counsel of Economic Development and Planning. I'm going to start with, I'm gonna stay on these slides, and I'm gonna talk a little bit about, kind of the big picture, talk context a little bit, and then I'll get into the details about the incentive request. Um, so the context with these pictures and that, actually, there's a, I think there's a better picture I could use to start with. So, the first thing I'll start with is city activity in this region. Um, to start with, in about 2017, the 291 South interchange was finished. That's this, at a cost of about 17 million. And then the city is undertaking the 291 North project at a cost of about 22 million. Um, construction, they, the notice to proceed on that project is expected to be the middle of this month. So, we're making good progress on the 291 North interchange. Uh, total costs, I believe, are around 22 million. Also, the city, uh, participated in the funding of relocation of the Troop A headquarters. That troop relocation was at a cost of about 16 and a half million, and the city has already advanced 8.1 million for that. Um, the city has approved a TIF plan in the region of 291 North, north of the 291 North interchange, in an attempt to, uh, achieve reimbursement for the city to cover those Troop A relocation costs. And then at the end of '23, the City Council approved a land clearance or redevelopment authority plan that included all of this property that matches the boundaries of the Community Improvement District that you also approved in connection with the Oldham Village project, uh, back in January. So, there's been substantial investment by the city, both at this interchange and this interchange. And the hope was that this property, all of this property, south of the 291 South interchange would eventually develop. And so, even though, as you know, I've, I've said to you many times that I remain neutral in my comments on a project like this, and my goal is to make sure you can make a legally defensible, fully informed decision, I think it would be remiss to say that, um, there are certainly many people who would argue that this is the payoff for all the investment that the city has made in this region with these transportation improvements. And it's a, it's come at substantial cost to the city because the state is unable to, uh, fund its own transportation network. So, the city has to eventually pay for half. And that is, we, the City Council has to come up with that money somehow. And the city's done that with 291 South, 291, 291 North, and then eventually the Third Street interchange, which will be down off the map here. So, that's a little bit of the context I believe we start with, um, when we're considering this request. Now, I'll switch over to my slides. I'll be relatively brief with my summary, but I want to make sure you have a, a full understanding of what the incentive request is, and that's what this slide shows. So, there's really only two tools that the developer's requesting in this case. They're requesting to use the land clearance or redevelopment authority plan and a tax increment financing plan. The LCRA would provide the two benefits that we've discussed in the past, sales tax exemption on construction materials, which is about 3.2% of the total project cost by my calculation. And then the second component use of the LCRA would be the 50% tax abatement for the multifamily components, and the value of that to the total project cost is about 1.7%. Then the second tool is a tax increment financing plan. And I broke it down into three components because each one of these, uh, is worth, um, discussing separately. So, first, the payment in lieu of taxes, I'll go ahead and note, I goofed. This number here should be 50%. I just noticed that when I was sitting back there. And that's something the developer pointed out, and it's a unique feature of this project. So, that's a significant goof on my part that I didn't change that to 50%. And that matches the school district's policy of 50% uh, tax abatement. And they may have, um, um, the school district may take a position regarding the multifamily, but in, in terms of tax increment financing, um, this, this is only 50%. Economic activity taxes, maximum allowed by statute, 50%. And I've broken this into two components to make sure you understand how this works. So, 50% of all sales taxes that would be generated within the project area are captured by the TIF plan. That would include the city, the county, the zoo district, and the Community Improvement District sales tax that's in effect. So, for this particular project, the developer's not requesting a new district. That district is already in effect. And the Community Improvement District includes all of the property in this project. So, when, uh, and the sales tax passed last week. So, the Community Improvement District sales tax is scheduled to go into effect on October 1st, and as cash registers come out of the ground, as stores come out of the ground in this new project area, it will be subject to the sales tax. So, if you approve a TIF plan, it will capture 50% of those CID sales taxes, as well as 50% of all the other taxes that are in effect. And that's why I broke this down to make sure you understand. And so then the, this is the breakdown of the, the benefit to the developer. My calculation, when I factor in this sales tax exemption up here, a bit differently than the developer calculated, I come up with close to 24% incentive request. So, we are looking at close to 99 million into a $416 million project, which is about 24%. And if we compare, I won't go through this chart again, I know you've seen this many times, but if you look at our summary down here, we have our averages, and we've discussed many times that the range of incentives that the City Council has approved, uh, is typically between 5 and 25%. And then we have an example now with the, um, View High Sports Complex of substantially higher than that. So, that would expand that range, but you might argue that's a bit of an outlier, and the range is still approximately 5 to 25%. And so, their request tonight is in keeping with incentive requests that the City Council has approved in the past. The rest of the slides I have included are to answer questions as they may come up. There's nothing in particular I, I have to say at this moment, but we may use those for discussion and questions. And the last thing I'll note is that the developer's not requesting any debt to be issued by the city. This is a pay-as-you-go TIF, which means they will only be reimbursed as the TIF revenues are generated for the project. And so the developer's success, uh, is what funds their reimbursement, and they're not asking the city to issue any debt. So, it's a lower-risk, um, calculation on the city's part, no debt being issued by the city. That concludes my, uh, opening remarks, and I'd be happy to answer questions and, and discuss.
Okay. Thanks, sir. Questions for the applicant or, at this point, potential applicant, uh, or staff? Councilmember Shields?
Thank you, Mayor. Um, I just have a couple of questions on this chart. Um, thank you for pulling that back up. So, the pilots, where it's supposed to say 50 instead of 100, but then is the, the 5 million, is that still the right number or is that reduced?
That number's accurate.
Okay. Gotcha. And then, um, the CID, the, the eats from the CID, would the CID revenues ever go to the city for anything? Are, are we an eligible re, because I, I guess I'm just trying to think of that, is it, in, in, since it was already sort of approved as an incentive tool, right?
Yes, it is. So, the contract that the council's already approved and we've executed, um, provides for 85% of all the CID revenues that are generated will reimburse the developer for the Oldham Village costs that they're going to incur for Oldham Village West, not East. And then the remaining 15% um, is for the city to divide between the 291 North interchange project and the Third Street interchange project as that eventually develops. And so it's an 85-15% split on the revenues at the outset that go to reimburse the developer for the Oldham Village costs. And then when the developer's fully reimbursed, all of the CID revenues that are not captured by this TIF plan will flow to the city to reimburse the city for the Third Street and the 291 North costs.
Okay. So, that, that 50%, is that pulling it out of their, the, probably just confusing myself.
I, I, I think I know where you're going with that question. So, here, here's, here's the way I think I can answer it without you asking me, which is, you've got the CID revenues that are generated, and then if you approve this TIF plan, that TIF plan will capture half of those revenues within that geographic area, but you still have the remainder of the CID revenues that are split, the 85-15 that I described.
Okay. So, the 85-15 would apply to the other half that's not being captured by this?
Correct.
Okay. That's, that's what I was trying to grab my head around. So, thank you. I appreciate it. Um, that's all, just, just wanted to clarify on those. Thanks. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Councilmember Rader?
Thank you, Mayor. Okay. I want, I want to make sure I understand this. Um, so, the Oldham Village TIF plan is, it's, it has, so, I was thinking about going back in my memory of when we went through that project. So, none of that TIF plan, is it gonna involve any part of this now?
I think the answer is no. Um, and one of the issues we've discussed preliminarily, and, but the developer just answered with their presentation, is they're proceeding as, as if this is a new project, standalone project, so it'll probably be a completely separate TIF plan, and there won't be inter, interplay between the two TIF plans.
But it does incorporate the present CID plan?
Yes. The CID is in effect, and the sales tax will go into effect on October 1st.
Okay.
And so as development comes out of the ground in this project, that sales tax will already be in effect.
Okay. And so, you, you mentioned the View High Sports Complex, and remember, they came to us with the, I think Columbia Capital was the one that did the, um, financial analysis? So, will we have that same?
Yes.
Opportunity for that?
Yeah. I, I believe it'll probably be Baker Tilly in this case, who is our second financial advisor that we use from time to time, and who did the analysis on the Oldham Village West project, and it's likely that we'll be engaging them again.
Okay. And then, can I ask the applicant a question? The mayor? Or are we just talking to?
No, you can ask.
Okay. I know you were gonna figure, I, I'm gonna bring this up.
Yes.
Okay. So, on your multifamily, uh, aspect, um, are you going to, is it, is it going to be as high-density as apartments, or are you going to be building something a little more low-density, like townhomes, or maybe like you did in, uh, West Prior with the villas?
Yeah, that's a great, that's a great question. We do have, on the very south side of the project, um, we do have kind of a brownstone villa planned, is what we're, uh, intending for that south side. Right now, I think we're showing like 80 units, is what that would be.
Okay.
But the two buildings that we were showing earlier that were the actual multifamily apartments, those would be high-density parking either underneath the facility, underground parking, or a structured parking component, um, made out of concrete.
So, are you planning on using that same, um, look, that same architectural style that you have in West Prior? Are we doing something different?
So, yeah, we're, um, on this, on the, this side, the multifamily, we're gonna, on the actual multifamily pro, product, we're gonna look at some of, a, kind of a step-back version, coming away from the roads, so it'll have some really neat character. It'll be different. You won't see, it's not here in Lee Summit. Um, it's pretty, it, it's a neat, neat type of product, but you'll see that on, on each of the apartment buildings to some extent. And then the actual villas themselves will look completely different than what we did over at Streets of West Prior. Yeah.
Okay. All right. I think that's all I have. Thank you, Mayor.
All right. Thank you. Questions or comments? Okay, I'll ask some questions. Mr. Pennington, um, since, since we're on this part, I'll just start where Councilmember Rader left off. Um, you said, uh, during the presentation, you envisioned this being more walkable, and, um, is, you know, I do, I'm pretty proud of Streets of West Prior. Um, I spend enough time over there, that's for sure. Um, so, but I think that the appeal of this being walkable because of, on the other side, you've got the fieldhouse. You've got, um, this is really a destination. You're talking about a wholesale, um, type of, it's gonna bring people from, um, possibly surrounding communities. And the longer, you know, they, if they're gonna make a trip, if they're gonna make an hour trip, or if they're going to the fieldhouse and they're making a three-to-five-hour trip, um, having something walkable would be really appealing. So, I know you've, you're, you're going fast on this, but if you could like, would you consider like, really thinking that part through on this? I love the idea of a civic space is the way you referred to it because, um, you know, that's kind of what we did with the downtown. You mentioned Green Street, that, uh, you've got, uh, it, it's certainly, it's got all the shopping and all the retail, and it's wonderful, but now we've, we're hoping to create a public space where people could just hang out and, and then go back for round two.
No, you're exactly right. I mean, I think the, the emphasis on, you know, we learn, obviously, we don't know everything. We, we learn on some of our projects too, and I think the success of Streets has been so great. Uh, there's a lot of traffic. And so, I think as you look at it, um, you know, I'm always looking, how do we improve? And how do we make something better? And so when I walk through that project, I just, sometimes I wish we had wider sidewalks and, and more screen, green space as we go back and forth. So, I, I don't like discounting my, our own project, but I am critical of some of our stuff to make sure that we are doing the best product going forward. So, I think, just to answer your question, it'd be wide paths, more green space, making it feeling even warmer, and having better connection pedestrian walkways as they're interacting with some of that green space, in and out of the civic space, and then to the residential.
Okay. Yep. Um, on the, um, when, when you're, is that a detention basin at the far, far south side in this, in the public area? Is that what you got circled, or is that just like park-like?
Yeah, I just gotta go to my.
Sorry.
Slide.
I know that you're early on, on this, and you had to push through, and, and there could be changes, but I'm just curious about a couple of these things.
On the, on, on the.
Far south.
Further south side, yeah, yeah. Um, I would say that if, the, most of the detention basins, you can see on the backside of the property, there's three large ones. Um, you know, the, that is kind of the lowest-lying area at the moment, and there is a Blue Line Stream that comes through there. So, what's nice about it is it will feed into a nice pond, right? I mean, it'll keep full, and it'll be nice and attractive. So, we'll have a chance to keep pretty, a pretty neat, uh, water feature there.
Like a water feature there?
Yeah. I mean, that's really key on a lot of things, is if, do you have water coming to it? And we're lucky enough that the placement of that is, it, it works pretty well.
Right. Right, right. Okay. Okay. Um, so, there's quite a bit of retail here, and then you've got the, the, the anchor at the far north. The numbers, um, it's a 400 and some thousand, million dollar development, but your sales tax revenues are really high. Um, and would you say that, I mean, are those, how, I know it's really hard to project at this point because you, you, you still have all the retail, so the, like the, the So like the total number of sales tax, you're talking about a new net benefit of 118 million, I think it was, in sales tax revenues.
Correct. Yes.
And is... Obviously, that's based on what you know from your anchor, but also you're making estimates based on the many retail that you're putting in. So is that conservative, or is it...
I think it's conservative. I think at the end of the day, we're really blessed here to have a majority of our sales planting day one. You know, versus Streets of West Prior, obviously, a lot of those came on longer and longer, deeper into the project. So I think the, you know, you never want to say 100%, but I think the certainty level is higher here for a lot of those sales and that net benefit to actually be achieved. But yes, the rest of the restaurants and the retailers, in our eyes, it only gets better.
Okay. Okay. I'm going to ask Mr. Bushak a couple of questions. Thank you. Appreciate it. Mr. Bushak, so on that dollar amount that I was talking about, that in their presentation, they call it a new benefit, sales tax, new net benefit, 118 million type of number. So that's... That would be from... To calculate that, we're using basically the 2.75 sales percent, sales tax...
Yes.
Plus the CID.
Yes.
And then after, after the incentive.
Yes, so...
So it's all three. It's the sales tax, typical, the one that's already in place, the CID that's now in place. Then it's also calculated after the net. So that's truly a net then?
Yes. Yes. And the developers provided enough data for me to do some more detailed calculations about the wholesale anchor, the wholesale retail anchor, as opposed to the other retail. I would say that all of the developers' assumptions at this point are commercially reasonable assumptions, based on the data that I see in TIF plans and the data that we typically see for incentive requests like this. But for the wholesale retailer alone, that is projected after all of the incentives, after you factor in the capture of the economic activity taxes through the TIF, the city, in about year three, when sales level off and they reach sort of full build-out, the city's sales tax revenues, after all the incentives, is about 3.2 million, 3.3 million. And then it ramps up from there. And over the entire life that we've calculated, so taking this out to the end of the Community Improvement District life, which lasts up to 27 years, the total sales taxes that the city would... Is projected to receive just from the wholesale retailer is about... It's close to $94 million. And the net present value of that at 6% is about $45 million over 27 years. So that's very substantial revenues for the city from the sales taxes.
Okay. So $3 million after about year three, 3.2 million? And again, that's net after the incentives?
Correct.
Okay. So I'm just looking for, you know, what does it mean to the city type of things? I mean, we're talking about the different intangibles, but tangible, quantifying it, these are the numbers that we're talking about. So I guess I got one more question, and then I'll... I got other council members that want to ask some questions. I think I'm going to go back to Mr. Pennington for this one. Mr. Pennington, when you come back for a formal presentation, given the size of this one, and you've already got, at some point, I mean, you've got data, so you can share information, at least with regard to jobs, because this is a pretty big job ringer, given that, you know, what I'm... What you're portraying on the sales side of this. So when you come back for formal presentation and application, can you have that kind of data ready?
Yeah, I think we'll be... We'll be in a spot to share that.
There's a lot of stuff that rolls off of benefits.
Yes.
And as much as we can quantify it, the better. For, you know, it's better to be able to reveal that and say, hey, here's what this means, not just for the sales tax dollars, but also you've got jobs and, you know, the multiplier effect that I like to talk about, you know, those types of things. So that'd be really great.
Absolutely.
All right. Well, hold on, we've got some more questions. I don't know if they're for you or Mr. Bushak, but I'll start with Councilmember Shields.
Thank you, Mayor. I forgot that we weren't in an actual public hearing, so we're able to give opinions tonight.
Yes, you can give opinions on this one.
And I had started making a whole list of all the things that I thought about this project, all the great things that come with it. And I didn't even have city revenue and jobs on my list until you made your comments. And I was like, oh, yeah, there's that too. That's really great. So I love this. I think it's great. I love the connectivity with the fieldhouse and the walkability component. I really look forward to seeing more about that. I love that it's mixed-use, that we've got retail and residential and civic all together. And then again, connecting to those really public spaces, the fieldhouse of Summit Waves is right across the street. I think that's great. And having the rooftops to help support all of that is great. I think that this is an example of true blight, that I know our definitions of blight are kind of broad, what we can legally justify under the statute. But I think this area, in terms of the remediation that's needed, in terms of the infrastructure that's needed, the underground storage tanks you have to remove, all that kind of stuff, really does meet both the letter and the spirit of the law when it comes to these kind of incentives of needing to cure this blight and take an area that right now is kind of an eyesore and turned into a real gem for our community and right near the heart of our community. So I'm really excited about that. There's a lot of infrastructure that needs to go, and a lot of public benefit we're going to see there. I really took to heart what Mr. Bushak said about this kind of being the payoff for all the investments that we made. And I just kept having the phrase, you know, if you build it, they will come through my head. Like, we've put so much into this area, and now we're going to see it really develop and pay back our citizens, not just for the tax money they've invested, but to see all these new uses that they'll get to enjoy. So I think that's really great. And then, as the mayor pointed out, the just the revenue to the city that allows us to provide services that our citizens expect, the jobs it's going to create. So I'm all for it. I think the level of the incentive request is reasonable, at about 24%. It's a little bit on the higher end, but again, there's a lot of blight to cure. So I think it makes sense that that comes in more towards the higher end of what we tend to approve. So, yeah, I'm excited to see more. Mr. Bushak, you always have to remind me, what's the next step here that we'll come back with a more formal... If we get kind of consensus, we'll come back with a more formal incentive request. And then there will be a PDP later where we get to see a lot more detail about design and all that kind of stuff. Am I on the mark there?
Yes. I think the very next step would be Tax Increment Financing Commission. This will go to the Tax Increment Financing Commission as soon as the plan can be ready and we can schedule it. There's a long lead time with the notices. And then we're projecting that their PDP and the incentive request will be back before you, November or December.
Okay. Well, I'm excited to see all the details about the design and the detention ponds and all that, but I know that'll come back to us later this year. So I think that's all, Mayor. You definitely have my approval to bring back more detail.
Thank you. Councilmember Funk.
Thank you, Mayor. You and Councilmember Shields got a couple of my questions answered for me. I had the question the same, but if we could get some detail on the number of jobs. But for Mr. Pennington, you mentioned something about talking with Mr. Snoke about the parks. Is that something that would be, I guess, down in that south corner?
Yes. Yeah, that's the area I'm talking about for the parks.
That would be something you'd work with the Parks Department to maybe collaborate on something down there.
Yep.
But thank you. I'm not going to repeat everything Councilmember Shields said. She kind of touched on a lot of it. I think this is excellent. And as Mr. Bushak said, I mean, this is paying off for everything we've invested in our infrastructure, and I would be glad to see more of this come back. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Councilmember Rader.
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to ask Mr. Bushak, I wanted to add on to something that I brought up about the View High Sports Complex when we had Columbia. So on the financial analysis, are we going to... I got to tell you, I really enjoyed that. And I... It was really... I thought it was very comprehensive. So will we be doing something like really getting into the weeds? Because I think it's really good for us to see, for the public to see on these projects. I mean, we know that Drake Development is great. It's not that. It's just that... I'm just saying, I would hope that that's what we're going to do.
Yes.
This is more of a comment.
Yes, we plan to do exactly the same type of analysis.
Super. And then, this is a general question. So I always wonder, when we have success, which West Prior's been very successful in our incentive package there, how is it paying off quicker than... I'm assuming, because I wasn't here then, but I'm assuming it was a 27-year type of an incentive package there. So is it paying off faster than anticipated? And do you know?
The answer is I don't know, but I can look into that.
Okay, that's great. And then I just had one more comment for Mr. Pennington on the multi-housing. And it's just this. I understand the reasons for the apartments, but what I would ask for would be that we just look into more diverse housing other than the apartments. So I know you said that before, but I just want to make sure that we're getting more of that, because we need it so badly. And, you know, we appreciate everything that you've done here and the success that you've brought to Lee Summit and to the residents here. And so I want to thank you for that. And I'm very excited, as I think we all are very excited to see this coming. It kind of happened all of a sudden, I guess, but it's wonderful. So just wanted to let you know that. I appreciate you guys. Thanks, Mayor.
Thank you. Mayor Potem Lopez.
Thanks, Mayor. I have more comments. I won't have any questions for you, Mr. Pennington. More comments and my opinion on the overall project. And I'll try not to repeat some of the positive characteristics that I've already been asked and mentioned by my colleagues. My perspective is that this is something definitely I would support. Given the context, the history, the, as Mr. Pennington said, the developer said a few minutes ago, the history with this site, the failed projects, stalled projects that have existed at that location, it wasn't very long ago that we couldn't get anyone to even just come and look at that property. And given the quick timeframe for this development project, the aggressive timeframe leads me to believe the time is of the essence. So I think it's something we need to act quickly on, assuming that the developer and staff go back and quantify, like you said, Mayor, you know, the benefits to the city, job creation, the multiplier effect, which I know our staff, Mr. Bushak and the developer, I'm sure will do a good job with that. This falls in line with the Envision LS Plan that some of us that were on Planning Commission over 10 years ago were involved with. This is a major corridor for the city that we've really committed to making sure these are held at the highest level of aesthetics and safety. As Mr. Bushak said, we've invested quite a bit as a community with the intersection, the interchanges, not only at this location, but the other ones just down the road, World 50 and Lee Summit North interchanges. And just the idea that you have a major wholesale prospect that is that interested in our city as a major anchor, and the economic multiplier benefit that our city can gain from something like this is something that I take very serious, and as a community could pay beyond dividends for us for many years to come and for many generations to come. And I'd like what I see, if they can just fine-tune it with the numbers, the multiplier effect, like I said, and a little bit more aesthetic, you know, detail of kind of what you're envisioning would be helpful when you come back. But yeah, I'd be in favor, Mayor, pursuing and moving forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Hodges.
Thank you. Not to repeat also what my colleagues said, but I think just seeing this is that it's just another example of another well-thought development that Drake Development's bringing to Lee Summit. I think it's nice to see that, you know, they constantly deliver over and over. And so this just makes me even more excited about something that, you know, when they present something, we know we're going to get it. So I appreciate that, and I'm excited for this, and I'm all for it. So thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Councilmember Pryor.
Thank you, Mayor. Not to be too repetitive, but I just wanted to say that I completely support this. I think it looks great. I'm excited for it, and thanks for bringing us another great development. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Okay. Yeah. Well, Mr. Pennington and team, you brought your team again. Thank you. It's actually... It's nice. Appreciate it. We do appreciate you guys continuing to see Lee Summit as where you want to be as far as investment and development, and that means a lot to us. We like the day trips that the west side's going to bring, and I think you're going to bring day trips on the east side. So those are good things for Lee Summit. And it's... You've had success elsewhere, but to do that, to get people to also partner with you, these other investors, these other companies, retailers, wholesalers, you must be telling a story about us as far as advocating for us, championing us as a place to put your dollars. And so we do appreciate that. And just work with Mr. Bushak, and we'll do our part on the... Up here, we'll ask the tough questions, but with a good rate of return, you know, I think you can see there's a lot of positivity up here. And it'll be a welcomed discussion. So thank you all for coming. And yes, you want to add something?
Yeah, I forgot to say, I just really appreciate you taking the school district's request and not going over 50%. So thank you. I know that probably wasn't easy.
Okay. Thank you all. All right. Next is a public hearing. Same teams going to be coming up to on our agenda item. I'm going to close the regular session, open the public hearing in the matter of Agenda Item 6A. This is a public hearing. It's an appeal of prohibited uses within the Envision LS overlay district. Matt Pennington is the applicant, along with J.D. Christie. Would all those wishing to speak to this matter please rise to be sworn in by the city Okay, we'll start with Mr. Pennington. Do you all want to do a presentation? Or Mr. Soto, are you going to do this? Is Mr. Soto here? Who's doing the presentation? There he is. He's over here by the... In the middle. I missed you.
Hector Soto Jr., senior planner. So this, I guess one thing I'll state, this is kind of a little bit similar, actually almost exactly similar to some other recent appeals in which this isn't the capital P public hearing where I'm going to be entering any exhibit list. So a lot of the information that I had prepared, you've already heard. So I'll give a brief overview as to why we're here, what is expected in terms of what action you'll be taking tonight, what impact does it have on our processes going forward, and just yield to any questions that you may have. So here's the Envision LS area. As has been mentioned before, 2017 is when the Envision LS area was established. It's shown here in the marigold color on the left. And then on the right, it shows the sub areas that were created within that larger area. The azure color over here is the Grove, which is adjacent to Envision LS but was purposely kept separately from it. So the overlay standards that were established were not impacted or did not directly affect the Grove area. So the appeal before you is to the list of adopted or prohibited uses that were established when Envision LS overlay was established in 2017. So at that time, to give some direction to the development communities to what the expectation might be for future development of the significant intersection at the south side of the downtown area, there were a number of uses that were listed as approved and prohibited to govern that area. So it wasn't just a standard zoning land use table that said, you know, this area's zoned this, and these are the range of adopted uses. So what made it a little bit different here is that when, at that time, 2017, the PMIC zoning district was established for all of this, because prior to that, it had been zoned PI, Planned Industrial, which left very little control at the staff level or at the Planning Commission City Council levels to what future development may occur there. So with the PMIC establishment of the PMIC zoning district, it provided that avenue to provide more guidance and more say into how this area would redevelop. So specifically to the prohibited uses, there was a laundry list of items that were, at that time, deemed perhaps not the most attractive in terms of guiding development going forward. And some of those that you see here are listed, some automotive truck-related uses, big-box retailers, depending on how they're configured, car wash, daycares, and drive-up-drive-through So here's the list of the permitted uses. In general, most of the uses that you typically see along our CP2 or higher-intensity commercial corridors would be allowed by Rite. And then some of the sub areas that you see here governed... And then some of the sub areas that you see here governed some uses that were perhaps a little bit more conducive or provide a little more context as to the nature of the development that we wanted to see. At that time, with that conceptual plan, the Arts and Entertainment Center was looked at as a particularly pedestrian-friendly area, potentially, with some civic spaces, art spaces, performance spaces. So that's why you see some of these uses that list a little bit more like, like rooftop restaurants, coffee shops, you know, artist studios, performing arts. It did, you know, again, reflective of rest, rooftop restaurants, just restaurants in general, but at that time, it did try to keep away from more auto-oriented uses, so drive-up and drive-through services were not allowed. So here highlighted are the uses that Drake is proposing or is appealing in terms of these prohibited land use, land uses. So you could see there are about 26 of them that apply to the Envision area as a whole. And they're looking at these particular four plus the, the drive-up and drive-through uses that I previously mentioned. So with this appeal process, it, it was established to provide developers a vehicle by which they can get in front of you before preliminary development plan to get some direction as if, I guess, to use an analogy, to see if you feel that they're kind of barking up the right tree in terms of the types of uses that they would look to bring to the area. So rather than waiting and making that request at the PDP level, which would take about three months from the time of application, this appeal process provides that vehicle just to get in front of you a little bit earlier and just to get some feedback from you as to whether or not you feel that they're, that they are going in the right direction. And by granting this appeal, as you see in front of you, it does not bestow any rights or entitlements or expectation by the developer that any decision that you make here is binding at the preliminary development plan level. At that point, it would be just like any other PDP review and approval where you would judge the plan and the uses on the plan that's set before you. So again, by granting an appeal, you're just giving an indication that you feel that they are traveling down the right path that you see to be the best reuse or use of this property. In terms of just what happens after this appeal, if an appeal is approved, it can be just done by a motion, resolution, or ordinance. In the past appeal that was done in 2023, the decision was just made by staff at that point that, that the recording of the motion in the minutes would be sufficient and there was no resolution or ordinance provided. In terms of just the general appeal of the uses that are brought before you tonight, you know, there's, there's verbiage in the ordinance that speaks to the Envision LS and that the uses that were listed there, prohibited or otherwise, are considered flexible and they would be considered case by case on a preliminary development plan. The range of uses that are proposed would be, the types of uses that you would see typically at the intersection of two major highways, it provide a broad range of uses and services that would be able to benefit and complement the existing uses, as well as provide a number of retail outlets and services for a lot of the bordering residential uses. Not to mention just a lot of the, the drive-through, passing through traffic along those highway corridors. It's really just a big box use. The ordinance, as currently written, doesn't just prohibit big box use, it just talks to more configuration, where the idea, again, was a little bit more pedestrian-oriented in nature. So the, the direction then was given that perhaps big boxes of no more than 80,000 square feet and anything exceeding that ideally would be more going vertical as opposed to horizontal. And again, just in terms of just regular, the other types of uses such as daycare and other standalone commercial uses, those, those are the types of uses that you typically would see along major commercial corridors and are recommended and supported by just the larger Ignite Plan as a whole. You know, again, this gives a little bit of broad ideas to what the PMICs is, you know, surrendered primarily by industrial on the east side of the tracks. And then you have quite a mix of other zoning districts as you get north of the highway and you've got the similar PMIC zoning for the first phase of Oldham Village. Here's just the land use plan, recommended land use plan showing a mixed use, commercial as being the highest and best use for that general area. So with that, I'll just leave it with that. Staff's recommendation is to grant the appeal to allow consideration of the quote-unquote prohibited uses as listed before you in this recommendation. So with that, I'll yield to any questions you may have.
Okay. Okay, very good. Thank you. When you say you recommend granting an appeal, we don't really have an ordinance or anything like that to read afterwards. We would have to make a motion, Mr. Head.
It would just simply be a motion to grant the appeal, Mayor.
Yep. I'm not seeing any discussion. You've got, in the previous presentation, there was a very large big box. So I think it was approximately double the size.
That would be correct.
Yes. Okay. Okay. Is there anybody here that wishes to speak to this matter and from the public, for or against? This is a public hearing, so. Okay. Do you have any exhibits, Mr. Soto?
No, not for this application, no.
Any additional comments, questions from council? Does the applicant care to make any comment? Okay. Hearing no further testimony, I'm closing the public hearing and reopening the regular session. Any council discussion? Is it discussion or would you, would you like to make an? Please, Councilmember Shields, would you please make a motion?
Thank you, Mayor. I move to approve the appeal to allow consideration of the following prohibited uses under future preliminary development plan for LS Arts Entertainment SubArea, automotive truck-related uses, retail big box in excess of 80,000 square feet on one level, car wash, indoor, outdoor, automated, and daycare.
Second?
Thank you. I have a motion to adopt or approve the appeal by Councilmember Shields, seconded by Councilmember Hodges. Discussion? Seeing none, please cast your vote. All votes are in. Please record the vote. Passes eight zero. So that one moves forward. One step at a time. All right. Next, we have public comments. Thank you. Looks like we have Ms. Volonwider here to make public comment.
I've been doing quite a bit of research on the zoning districts. And I think some of them are being misused, specifically residential large lot. I, I want to point out first what can be on there in terms of outbuildings.
Go ahead and flip that over, Ms. Volonwider. If you'll look up at the screen, it's, it rotates. There we go.
If you look at that detached garage and rural large lot for lots that are one to five acres, the setback is 20 feet. The detached garage shall not exceed 250 square feet or for each 5,000 square feet of lot area. For lots less than five acres, 2,500 square feet. If you're zoned ag, you've got no limitation on size. Now, if you go to a livestock building, you can only have that in ag. And the prohibited uses, I think, are probably, you know, you can't have hogs, you can't have a concentrated feedlot, things like that. But that's not residential large lot, so you can't have that livestock building there. So we go to sheds. And for sheds in residential large lot, maximum size is 250 square feet. I recall this particular rezoning. And it was Hector Soto as the Planning Division Manager, Senior Planner, been here over 20 years. This is a piece of property that's 4.93 acres, zoned ag. And the guy wanted a pretty big house, but it was a long, narrow lot. So the reason he had to rezone was not because he couldn't build a house in ag on 4.93 acres. It didn't have to be 10 acres. He couldn't meet the setbacks. So when you're deciding on how you're going to rezone a property, whether it's going to be residential large lot or stay ag, you've got to consider what outbuildings are already there. And do you really need to rezone it? Do you have to go through the rezoning when you could have 3.82 acres and still build a house on there if it's zoned ag? So why do you have to go through a rezoning process if you've got a lot that's, say, 300 feet by 500 feet? You can meet those setbacks, but you got to consider, I guess, what the use is going to be. And is it going to be a prohibited use or is it going to be a use that is allowed?
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Volonwider. Okay, we're going to go to proposed ordinances, first reading. Councilmember Funk, would you please read bill number 25-121?
Thank you, Mayor. I advance the second reading in ordinance vacating utility easements located at 25 Northwest Tudor Road and 818 Northeast Douglas Street in the city of Lee Summit, Missouri.
Thank you. I have a motion to move to second reading. Bill number 25-121 by Councilmember Funk, seconded by Councilmember Hodges. Discussion? Seeing none, please cast your vote. All votes are in. Please record the vote. Passes seven zero. Thank you. Councilmember Rader, would you please read bill number 25-122?
Thank you, Mayor. I move to advance the second reading, bill number 25-122, an ordinance vacating private access and utility easement located at 2320 Southeast Blue Parkway in the city of Lee Summit, Missouri.
Thank you. We have a motion to move to second reading. Bill number 25-122 by Councilmember Rader, seconded by Councilmember Hodges. Seeing none, please cast your vote. All votes are in. Please record the vote. Passes eight zero. Thank you. Goes to second reading. Councilmember Hodges, would you please read bill number 25-123?
I advance to second reading, bill number 25-123, an ordinance vacating a portion of certain easements located at 1001 and 1005 Southwest Blue Parkway in the city of Lee Summit, Missouri.
Thank you. We have a motion to move to second reading. Bill number 25-123 by Councilmember Hodges, seconded by Councilmember Carlisle. Seeing none, please cast your vote. All votes are in. Please record the vote. Passes eight zero. Goes to second reading. Thank you. Next, Councilmember Shields, would you please read bill number 25-124?
Thank you, Mayor. I move for second reading, bill number 25-124, an ordinance describing final plat entitled The Town Homes at Chapel Ridge, Third Plat, lots 20 to 42, and tracks E through I as a subdivision of the city of Lee Summit, Missouri.
Thank you. We have a motion to move to second reading. Bill number 25-124 by Councilmember Shields, seconded by Councilmember Carlisle. Let's just do a, we can do a roll call and then you can fill it in while we're doing committee reports. Oh, here it comes. Never mind. Yep. All votes are in. Please record the vote. It goes to second reading unanimously. Thank you all. And now we'll go to committee reports. Councilmember Shields.
We will have Finance and Budget Committee Monday, July 7th at 4:00 PM in chambers.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Rader.
Thank you, Mayor. On the Parks and Rec Board, I just wanted to report that they had a really good discussion on the FIFA and basically, you know, what it's going to be like from the park perspective. It was really good. And I believe it's supposed to be coming before CEDC in the next, maybe this, maybe this one coming up. But the most fun was the renaming of a park, a new park that they had at Eagle Creek, I think it was Eagle Creek West. And I didn't get to vote on it, but I was really excited when they came up with the name of the Red Hawk Park. And here's why. I have a red hawk that lives in my oak tree in my backyard and his name is Ricky. And so I was really hoping, and I talked to Mr. Snook about that, if maybe we could make Ricky the mascot for the new Red Hawk Park. Anyway, it was, it was a really great meeting and I had fun with the Ricky, the red hawk. Thanks, Mayor.
Awesome. Thank you. Any other committee reports? Okay. Council comments? Very good. Thank you. Council staff roundtable.
Thank you, Mayor. A few items to share with you. As of July 1st, the park impact fee goes into play. So the Parks Department worked hand in hand with our development services to put that into play. So just wanted to remind everybody that's, that's in motion. As you all probably know, Prior Road shut down Monday for the Prior Road Improvement Project. So that Prior Road will be shut down through the spring of 2026 as we create those improvements. Southeast Douglas Street, so there will be a public meeting for the Southeast Douglas Street improvements. That's the section from Blue Parkway on the south up to Fourth Street. That, that meeting will be held July 10th from 5 to 7 here at City Hall in our Strather Conference Room, which is down toward the Third Street side for that public information meeting. Already mentioned Legacy Blast. And if anybody's wondering about firework regulations, they're out on our website. I know the Fire Department's pushing that out too. And we have certain days that we allow it and certain timeframes for which we allow it. So feel free to check out the website for that information. And then we do have understaffed reports, the Fire Department's annual accreditation report. That's a written report that provides not only you as our elected officials, but the public, an opportunity to look at that annual accreditation report from the Fire Department. If you have any questions about that, Chief Snyder and then Caroline Wiggins can certainly respond to any inquiries there. And then lastly, if, if you, if I may, Mayor, call on Ryan Elam to introduce one of our, well, it is our newest director, department director. So I'll, I'll turn it over to Ryan, so he can introduce our newest member of our team.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the council. I am pleased to welcome Tracy Albers to the city of Lee Summit. I'm going to have her come up here and say a little bit about us, about herself. She's coming to us from Woodstock, Georgia and has spent some time in California and is originally from the Lincoln, Nebraska area. So got a variety of different experience and I think she's going to be a great addition to the team and to the city as well. So wanted to welcome Tracy and give her a few minutes.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the council. Tracy Albers with the Development Services Department now. It's a pleasure to be before you this evening. The past couple of weeks, it's been a wonderful experience getting to relocate my family here to Lee Summit, minus some unexpected hurdles in the relocation process. Born and raised in Lincoln, Nebraska, spent about 17 years in Southern California, Los Angeles and Orange County. Angeles and Orange County, and then relocated to the Atlanta metro area about four, four and a half years ago due to my husband's employment. So again, it's a pleasure to be with you this evening. I look forward to working with you, with the Planning Commission, with the executive team, and with an incredible department. Two days in, feels like drinking water out of a fire hose, but I'm looking forward to all the lives ahead.
Awesome. And how do you spell your last name?
Albers, A-L-B as in baby, E-R-S.
That's what I wrote down, good. And are you a Husker? Do you consider yourself a Husker?
I am.
Did you go to Nebraska?
Twice.
Twice? My wife's a Husker. That's good. So you're doing really good so far. All right? So...
You're one of few people that would say that, with me being a Husker.
No, it's true, you're doing really good. But there's a really important question, like, hopefully you get this right. It's really important. What is the greatest Christmas movie of all time?
Several have advised me that the correct answer to this question...
Oh, Donna Lake? You are in trouble, Donna Lake, you're in so much trouble.
Is It's a Wonderful Life, but I can confidently say, as the mother of a four-year-old girl, that at least at our household, it's a Muppets' Christmas Carol with Sir Michael Caine.
Yeah, yeah, that is a great one. Hmm, that's interesting. I mean, there's, it's along the same lines. It's all about, it's all about different timelines, and yeah, I've seen that one. It's a great one. All right, well, you did really, really great. Does anybody else have a question for her? I mean, we're going to have a million questions for you over the next few years, so you might as well get used to this group, given your role. Yes, Councilmember Funk?
I wonder how long it will take her to figure out the other half of M.I.Z.
Oh.
That will be the other half.
I'm married to a Husker, so it just doesn't work. I mean, she even went, my kids went to Lee Summit High, which is black and gold, and they're tigers, and she's still had a hard time with it, with it all, so.
My better half is from Green Bay, Wisconsin.
Oh, hi.
So I'm not so much familiar with the black and gold as I am with the green and white.
Yeah, I bet. Gosh, my wife's a big Packer fan, too. This is really weird. You might have to meet her sometime, yeah. Well, thank you and welcome.
Thank you.
We're excited to work with you.
Thank you.
We still have more work to do. Is she going to be in closed session? We could continue this, because, you know, well, I mean, it's, you know, I need somebody to read us into closed session. Councilmember Shields, please.
Thank you, Mayor. Pursuant to Section 61021 of the revised statutes, the state of Missouri pertaining to legal actions causes of actual litigation involving a public governmental body in any confidential or privileged communication between a public governmental body or its representatives and its attorneys in pursuit of Section 61021/2 of the revised statutes of the state of Missouri pertaining to the leasing, purchase, or sale of real estate by a public governmental body where the public knowledge of the transaction might adversely affect the legal considerations, therefore, I move to enter closed session.
Second.
Thank you, I have a motion to go into closed session by Councilmember Shields, seconded by Councilmember Hodges. Discussion? Seeing none, can I get a roll call vote, please?
Councilmember Funk?
Aye.
Councilmember Pryor?
Aye.
Councilmember Shields?
Aye.
Councilmember Carlisle?
Aye.
Sorry, Councilmember Hodges?
Aye.
Councilmember Rader?
Aye.
Mayor Proton Lopez?
Aye.
Mayor Baird?
Aye.